Good evening, everyone. Can you please be vocal? Again, welcome everyone to the study session. It's Thursday, November 2nd. And just a little bit quick. Si necesita interpretación al español, aquí tenemos a Bolso. Puede, puede. This is people need special interpretation from Bolso. If you need to, the public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issues are on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a paper. About what interests, and then you can give it to someone who is right across the room. If you wish to speak to a board subject listed on the agenda, you will be called to the podium at the time that the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you will be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person per topic, unless anyone else is there. Who would have other any conditions or duties to be involved with? With that, can I please get a motion for you, please? Thank you. Almoza, David. Okay, and so today, speaking in I think I'm one, of the Workforce Housing, and I am going to go and pass the microphone to Rafaela Lantano. He is the moderator tonight. He and we are sitting together.
Thank you, work president, Cecilia. Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Rafaela Lantano. The executive director, we're sitting together. Bienvenidos a todos. Placer tenerlos aquí. Se ocupa traducción. Tenemos aquí atrás apoyo. Si quieren hoy todo lo que sea en español, tenemos apoyo hoy. Again, my name is Rafaela Lantano. I'm here representing where we sit together. The school district is one of our core partners. A little bit about what we do. We do collective impact work. So what does that mean? We go after active gaps that exist in the community around education, wellness, and equity. And for us, we really like to see our work as being systems engineered driven. That's right, systems engineered driven. So we leverage funds and resources to really go after things such as bus passes in our community. Last year, we were able to work with the school district to get every kid in Riverside Park bus passes to get to school at no cost. No longer are those days of our kids having to pay to get to school. That's some of the local public policies we do. We also do research. So we do COVID-19 needs assessment partnering with the Stanford Gardner Center, where you've done their families. We were able to find what our immediate needs were during that time of COVID. All of this can be found on our website, that's sittogether.org. We also like to spark innovation. Last year, we were able to have some up north, downtown, around youth on bikes, called Bike Life Movement. Instead of us responding with punishments, we responded with creation of program. That's right. Focus on our board here helped us create the PACE program. Purposeful Action Creation Engagement Plan, which created jobs, mentoring, amenities downtown for youth. To be able to have a place to go hang out, no longer we have the old discoveries of Malibu. If you grew up here, you know what those are. So we had to create pop-ups to make sure we responded to that youth voice, choice, and leadership that we wanted to really hear from. In addition to that, we can be and facilitate collaboration. We have five working groups and 11 initiatives. I'm not going to go over each one. You can go to our website. There's a lot of work that happens there. I gave you an example, too. But a lot of the folks in this room help us move our local public work. Trustee McAvoy, trustee Cecilia are both a part of our collective. And Lawson, as well, has participated. And Dr. Baker actually chaired our collective for the past two years. So it's a pleasure to always work with the school district to move this collective good. I like to say, we like to move the needle of goodness in our community. And we also provide community development, so like professional development for all of our community-based organizations here in our area. Our core members are Kaiser Corinente, the school district, which actually was one of our first partners. The school district really believed in this, starting in 1991. We're 32, 32 years old. That's right. And so school district was one of the first ones that said, yeah, we believe in this collective impact model. We stand out as Stanford's work on collective impact work. And Stanford Gardner Center also sits on our core group, as well as Sequoia Union High School District. I think I just saw trustee Rich near the house. He's also on our leadership council. And now our new chair for the board council, which is really exciting. Thank you for being here. Human Services Agency for San Mateo County also sits on our board. The City of Redwood City is our fiscal sponsor, so we're a legal entity of the City of Redwood City. Very unique, very unique that we have all of these players on the table. Sequoia Healthcare District, as well as Stanford John D. Gardner Center, and Canyon College. So a lot of people on the table, but again, we don't just sit at the table. We make activity happen. We get after it. When we see a gap, we like to fill it. And when my friends need help, I come in and try my best to support to be able to bring what I bring. And that's a lot of community knowledge. I've been in the community now going on for 14 years. Worked with many of the educators in this room, which is really exciting. And it's just my joy to be your moderator today. Some of the goals for today is we're going to bring back the conversation on workforce housing for Redwood City School District. That's right. We're going to share information, and we're also going to learn about powerful case studies that exist locally at the Jefferson Union Unified School District. They were actually able to have something that we're going to see today and how it's working around what we want to talk about. We're here to also answer board and guest questions. So speaker cards are available, and I got a snapshot for y'all. If you want to speak today, make sure you fill one of these out. They're in the back there. We have the free water and snacks. We also got snacks though, right there. If you get a little hungry, feel free to grab a snack, get some water. In addition to that, we have the agenda. If you grab an agenda, feel free to grab an agenda. All right, sometimes these papers we forgot. It's like, sort of, right? We also have some frequently asked questions, bulletins that sometimes we ask a question that may be answered in these bulletins that our staff works really hard on. So feel free to grab some of this as well, so that if you have a question on certain items, it may be answered on this document right here. All right? And then going into that, I also want to say that Riverside School District Board and Superintendent is here to listen and learn with and for the community. That's right, with and for the community. All right, and when we're in the Q and A, we emphasize that the project here centers to be able to answer questions and are followed with community members. In addition to that, I do want to remind you all that this is a study session. So under bylaw 9323, individual speakers should be allowed up to three minutes to address the governing board on each agenda or non-agenda item. Should one or 10 people wish to address any topic, the governing board may elect to allow three minutes per speaker. Should 11 to 20 people wish to address any topic, the governing board may elect to allow two minutes per speaker. Should more than 20 people wish to address any topic, the governing board may elect to allow one minute per speaker. So your voice matters. Don't be hesitant to ask a question if you're here to do that. Again, this is your community. We're here to hear from you, learn from you. And again, we're, we're here to actually bring upon new learning as well. Our desired outcome, all right? Why is it ultimately that we're here, right? Ultimately, who likes a goal for the night? You're here on a weekend. Come on, right? Yeah, goals, right? Our goal for tonight is for that, is for the community, staff, and trustees to learn more about what this investment can mean to Riverside School District. Staff members to help create a stronger educational ecosystem. Right? So we're here to learn. How do we do that? Whether it's, hey, you know, I don't know about this, or you know what, I know about this. We're here to learn about what it is that the community does know and what we don't, right? So trustees, I just thank you again for having me here as your moderator. And community, it's always fun to be here with y'all. I hope you have a good time getting to know this community as well. I like the Vancouver School. I see the principal there. Say hello. And we're going to pass it off to Peter. So Peter, you have your first one, Mike.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Peter Abrup, and I'm a consultant with the school district, helping them figure out whether this project is feasible and they can move forward with it. Tonight, I've got, we've got a two-part presentation. It's very brief and pretty high level. We're going to give you a snapshot of where the district is in its exploration of this proposed project and kind of where we are in the process of going from, you know, zero to actually having approvals from the city and other agencies. We have special guests that are joining us tonight from Jefferson Union High School District, and they'll present their project and talk about what they've learned so far in opening and operating that project. And we really are looking forward to time at the end so that questions from the school district board or the audience can be answered by those trustees from Jefferson. So when we get there, save your good questions for them because there's a lot to learn from what they've done. So I want to just start very quickly by framing the problem that we're trying to solve. We may need our lights lowered a bit here so everybody can see. Which amazing lights are wonderful, except if you're trying to show some lights. How's that? Can you see those okay? So the problem is pretty straightforward, and I think everybody in this room totally understands what this problem is. It's called affordability crisis of housing. And it's well documented that California's affordable housing crisis is affecting school districts directly from recruitment and retention and making it very difficult for those districts to put together their all-star teaching team. So what we're going to talk about tonight is what is it that can be done directly by the school board to help mitigate this problem? So, you know, buying a house in this county is insane. The statistics are well known. Minimum qualifying income for average price right now is about a half a million dollars per household, which really means that rental, good quality and affordable rental housing needs to fill that gap, especially for people starting early in their career. In San Mateo County, this is from the county's latest report on housing affordability. You can see that almost nobody on this chart, depending on their job or profession, can afford rent. And it's actually 3.7 times the minimum wage to rent in the county right now. So that gap, and to just put this in perspective, a teacher who's three or four years into their career in this area is probably somewhere about halfway across that line on the bottom. Six to seven thousand dollars per month. So we've got a real problem. There's an organization called ETSOR, a statewide organization that has done a lot of research on this problem and has done, and provided a lot of good information to districts. You can see that in California, the, what they call the percentage of average paid for two-bedroom or the amount it takes of that salary is way over half and climbing upwards. Whereas affordable, by definition, means you're spending about 30% of your income on rent. So that is making it, again, very difficult. In 47 school districts in the region, a high-speed teacher can only earn enough to rent an affordable one-bedroom apartment. That is really a challenging statistic. This graph is from the same study and actually highlights salaries in the Redwood City area and shows that the burden for a three or four-bedroom is way beyond, it's doubled what it should be just to rent. So that's what we're talking about tonight is a big problem that the board of the trustees has decided to really take a hard look at and decide that there's a way to help mitigate that problem in this community. So the goals that we've been working under and that have evolved over time are really focused on the improvement of retention and recruitment to leverage this potential partnership we have with the Subra organization, which is a developer that owns the property right next door to the district office, and to adapt the best practices from similar projects in the workforce housing arena in school districts, which is not a lot. Jefferson Union High School District actually is one of the very first in the region to have done one. And also to balance, find that balance point between what the district can fund and also protect their general fund so that this project would not in any way hinge on the general fund. So our goal that we're working toward and the model that we're testing as we move forward is can we offer new apartments in a new building in the downtown Redwood City area and offer those to employees at 25 to 35% under market rates? So that's the goal. We're going to hear about that when Jefferson does their presentation here in a few minutes. But that really is what we're trying to test to make sure that we can make that work. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to, let's see, who's going first?
I'm going to go first. I'm Mark Fenniger. I'm with Studios Architecture. I'm also a rep, resident here in Redwood City for the last 15 years. And the first thing we wanted to talk about in relation to the potential of this project is the site and where is this site located? And we looked at the site in relationship to the schools that are in the district and wanted to make a notice that it's all of the schools in the district are within a few miles, which seems to be pretty optimal as far as location ability to get to it. Then if you zoom in a little bit more on the next slide, please, where is this relationship to downtown Redwood City? And it's actually really close to the downtown, really close to a lot of the walkable functions of the downtown, close to transportation, Caltrans station, the bus station. And a lot of the amenities of the plan in downtown really presents an opportunity to have people who work in the school district really be part of the community and really be engaged in downtown and really have an opportunity to connect. And I think that's pretty exciting, naturally. And then one of the things we want to refrain this in in the next couple of slides is now we're looking at a map of where the site is in downtown. And the green is something that I'll start referring to as the downtown precise plan, which is a, it is a plan that the City of Redwood City has for this specific area that there are certain zoning rules, certain regulations that any project that happens here, we have to have a dialogue with the city about how can we improve for it. And it, but just to start with, this project is in the heart of the downtown, as I said. And it really presents that opportunity to put people who work in these schools on a everyday basis, and the connection, people who live in the city on a daily basis, too. Next. This starts to overlay where, how this site is to various businesses that actually district can be owned. But also we show that within a, within a technical walk-in business, there's really a tremendous amount of resources, tremendous amount of restaurants, tremendous amount of access to retail business services. So it's a way of saying, you know, that this site essentially located is really how you walkable, which just increases this idea of connectivity. Next. Several years ago, 19, I'm sorry, 2020, we started working at this project. And what we started off with is the diagram on the left, which is just a simple box diagram that shows what the potential mass and the potential size of the project could be. And then what we were trying to do was understand how much housing could be provided within the limits of this downtown precise plan as it stood in 2020. And at that time that we came up with this, it's about a six-story building and about 68 units. And in some of the early dialogue that came out and some of the early research that the school district did in talking to, what sort of demand is there for this housing? The feedback came back is that there's actually quite a demand. And what can we do to get as much housing on the site as we can within the limits of the plan? So what we've developed is this current design that we're proposing to the city, a 10-story building and about 108 units. So increasing the number of units to 108 from 68, and going from six stories to 10. And also being able to accommodate more than this offices for the school district. Now, and next slide. And then, Quinn, one of the first things we were talking about with the city was just understanding an approach from how should the building look and feel. And we don't have the building design. We don't have images of it yet because that's, that is a process that we will evolve with city and the school district. But we did take an early position of just understanding the history of the site. The site actually sits right on the edge of Redwood, which was really the founding of the economy of Redwood City. Redwood, it was where the lumber mills were. And it's actually become an older building. If you look at so many old buildings, there's, you know, really simple, pragmatic lumber buildings. And a lot of the old buildings in Redwood City were actually spread. You can tell underneath that facade is correct. The current library, which was the old fire station, is correct. There's sort of, and there's a lot of these wonderful little buildings. You can see like this whole, you can see the lives of the children, I'm sure. It's a brick building, and so there's this brick there. And so what we're sort of just trying to say is through brick and through wood, is there a way of thinking of that in a way that proposing a building that might be modern, but it looks like it belongs here? It grows out of the history of the site. It grows out of the nature of the site. So it's, we're just trying to think about the natural history of the site. And really we want to ultimately move towards a building that looks like it belongs. Next. This is a plan of the building, at the ground floor plan. And this, this is just to illustrate where we are and thinking about how do we start to understand the types of programmatic functions that go in here. And the yellow would be entrance for the housing. And it's a primary entrance right on Riverside Street, as opposed to Bradford Street, which is around the corner. And that does, it actually allows for an identity and an entrance that's closer to the entry. Just a few blocks away. And this orange space is the space that we call a flexible space. What we mean by flexible is that is programmed, it's actually flexible for the benefit of the school district. And it could be a variety of functions, including just flexible use space. And I think, next slide, suggests this is what a lobby might look like on for the residential future. And one of the things we're seeing is the importance of lobbies' ability, multipurpose, and not just like to move in and how can we nail, if we need to talk to someone over the grid. It's really thinking about how do you make the most function out of that lobby space and entry to the street. Next. And then what might the flexible space be, if it'd be flexible means? Would it be some sort of community-serving space that further activates the street? And the real point here is there's a potential for it to be something that further benefits the school district. We don't have to do that today, like now, we don't have to do that. We want to reserve some space that will create that potential if we're running down. Next slide. And on the second floor is, is on about 19,000 square feet that's set aside for the school district. And this is a space that will allow for offices, meeting rooms, and conference rooms for the school district functions to occur. And also, you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, there is an elevator deck. And this is an outdoor space that really presents an opportunity for the people who work here to have, you know, outdoor space and access to light in there, which is really good for people in the school district. Next. And now I'm going to give back to Elaine, who is our partner in really understanding the housing.
Thank you, Mark. My name's Elaine Wong. I am an architect with Inver Williams Pollin. We are a multifamily, primarily affordable workforce housing architecture firm in San Francisco, working all throughout the area for over 35 years. And are really excited actually about the idea of workforce housing in particular. When we started on this exploration, our market was TV back in 2020. It's right before, during the pandemic. You know, I think he mentioned we were really looking at six stories and maybe about 60, just under 70 units. And when the demand side came back and said, well, there's actually quite a bit of demand, you know, we really wanted to think about, well, what types of units and community members within the school district might need to accommodate. And so where we kind of landed just for the feasibility study, looking at the 10 stories and the parcel that we were working on, is about 108 units of workforce housing. There's seven studios, about 46 one-bedroom units, 47 two-bedroom units to accommodate smaller families, and then also three-bedroom units, which are really highly unusual in the area. Family units are very challenging to accommodate, but you know, same demand is there. So what we, you know, really are trying to do is, is, you know, within limited space and resources, try to create efficient, very generous and comfortable units. And this is just a kind of an example of one way we could lay out. This is the unit count. You can see the light yellow is the studios. The darker yellow is the one-bedrooms. The orange are the two-bedroom units. And then the dark, darker orange, red orange is the three-bedrooms. So this is kind of a sample of how a floor might lay out with, you know, 14 families or 14 households on one floor. You know, the goal is really just to create community in the building. I think educators and education staff, my nature, are very collaborative. And so, you know, if this, this is all, we really want to see each of these floors be home to those residents. Next, please. These are just example images of, you know, how the units might look. I think it's the baked in stone. But these are just some units that our friends have worked on in the past. You know, the living rooms are really nice. They have adequate lots of natural light. That's what we believe in. The kitchens are, you know, have great geese work, countertops, great finishes. You know, most of the housing is, you know, it's very high-quality materials, long-lasting, durable materials, and we really prioritize that at our office. And so, you know, this is just a sense of, you know, if we're to perform with this, then we would love to, you know, recommend similar things. The bathrooms also equally durable in their, in terms of the fixtures, the finishes. This is, you know, these are homes, we want these to be very comfortable. And I think we also have the opportunity, you know, with the climate being so favorable down here, really have balconies and some outdoor spaces for some of those units, which is also a potential of energy. Next, please. Speaking of amenities, we, on the third floor, we're thinking, so the second floor is the offices. The third floor might be where the residential units would start and along the outside end would be residences. But then towards the inner ring, where it would be some courtyard, there could be some really nice residential amenities. So this could be a large community room for gatherings, an exercise room for people to kind of work out. And then, you know, both of those confront a large community outdoor terrace. So similar to the workplace deck, this would be a residence-only space for outdoor gatherings and outdoor activities. And, you know, again, this building is, or potentially, you know, the whole building is held for someone, not just the unit. So if you have a unit there, then you can take advantage of all of the other amenities within it. And so a couple of flagrant images, just how we think, you know, some of these spaces could look. Oh, next, please. Fitness room is a great way to kind of have casual contacts and, you know, build community. They can, they can have like this furniture equipment, weights. But we also imagine, you know, it could, if the doors could open up, there could be a Saturday morning yoga class or something, or some sort of council, communal activities not guided by the residents. Next, please. The community, the community room or the residential room for the residents themselves. Again, we imagine a lot of indoor-outdoor connection, great finishes, including like a kitchen for communal meals, or birthday parties, or, you know, you know, fun kind of pop-up thing. But, you know, they also, they can also be very flexible, serve the residents with activities that they want to do. with activities that they want to organize, uh, whether that's book clubs, or group nights, or date nights, um, trivia nights. So we really just imagine that this is a, is a kind of the heart of places where people can, can, um, connect and get to each other. Next please. And then last, we'll just give you an idea of what that outdoor space might look like. Um, if, you know, it might, it could glow during the day, you know, also just take advantage of the score, just find it down there and enable a lot of these things. So, and I think, talk about to Peter or to Elaine.
Yeah, actually, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to this. Um, we, we did want to explain to everyone where are we in the process, just so that everyone understands, you know, where we are and why is that today? Um, I'll, I'll walk through some history, you know, where, where we are is right where this turns from green to purple right now. But, but just the history of this is, um, as I said, in two thousand and twenty, we formulated this early, um, idea of a project that was about sixty-eight units and, and six stories. Um, and at the time, um, the Redwood City Council or Redwood City, um, the, the government, they were, um, going through a process of, um, understanding the downtown precise mental future growth might be. And we had to talk with them, had to vote for something called the gatekeeping process, which is, um, right now, the city council and the, the planning department are, are very, um, focused on the types of projects that, that they are advancing in the downtown area. And because of this project's nature and relationship to providing housing for the people who will work in the school district, the, um, the city council voted to approve this to the force of the gatekeeping process. Now, what, what that voting means is it allowed us to move forward to where we are today and really get ready to make a future planning submission. And what that planning submission is, is the beginning of a dialogue with the city's planning department. Initially, what the city is going to be focused on is how big is it? How many units are there? Um, and it's about the size of it, and how is that consistent with the planning they have for, for this district? Um, we, you know, internally believe that we are consistent, but what we really need to make is this planning submission, um, and to get to that, we need to get that done. Along the way, the dialogue will eventually turn to more detailed questions, but this initial question is really around how does the project fit within the current planning and how consistent is it with your current plan? And so, uh, what this schedule was showing is a goal of trying to submit that planning submission later this year, early next year. Um, and we think that it'll then go into something that is called entitlement submission. Entitlements really means that the planning commission and the city council, um, agree that the project can proceed and can build what is in that planning submission. That means that we can then move on to developing, um, drawings that someone could actually build from here. Um, so we, we believe that entitlement process will take, uh, about a year. And then once that is done, then we can proceed to developing and designing further action develop, we, we call the construction documents, but that really means really thinking about the details, really thinking about the materials, developing enough information so a contractor can then build from that. And at that point in time, we're going to have to go back to the city and have the building department approve, give us a building, which means they will review the drawings again. And then, and after that, we'll ultimately give us a building permit. And, and we think that that's in two thousand and twenty-six. And then, and then sometime after that, we'll show them, start building the walls. Can we get this project coming by sometime in two thousand and eighteen?
Thank you so much, Elaine, Peter, and Mark. We learned a lot about the project at Redwood City School District. Learning about, thinking about, dreaming about, as well as our, all of our community members. Again, if you just sat here, uh, don't forget, if you have some questions, there's speaker cards that we'll have time to dive into after our presentations today. I have the great honor to, to just be able to welcome Jefferson Union High School District. And they are doing some remarkable things around what we're talking about today. We have Andrew here, Lee, Kalima, my good friend, it's good to see you.
Good to see you.
You just made it. You're right on time. And you're going to be talking about, um, the program, the, the amazing project that you helped develop with your colleagues. Um, in a beautiful area that they call, um, Prustal City, myself, you know, who used to play Jefferson all the time, uh, spent a lot of time in Westlake. Uh, it's, it's a beautiful town, and you're going to tell us a little bit about how you made it a little bit more beautiful. How's that sound? I'm going to pass it on to you.
Hello. Hi. My name is Kungis Laki. I am on the board of the Jefferson Union High School District, the current president.
Yeah, Neil, uh, current president of the Jefferson University.
Um, this is my eleven here on the board. Um, and that's going to be a little late. I don't know. Um, but I'm very happy and proud to be here to talk about our workforce housing. Um, the picture that you see up top, that is us at the, um, groundbreaking. And that was, yeah, they changed, um, just because we had blocked for this for so long. So just because I actually be able to break ground was amazing. And then now to see the finished product, the finished product of the dry basid every day we go over and doing is always both my mind. So the next slide. So, uh, this is just the agenda, um, going into the concept, um, and what it is feasibility and marketing outreach, the funding, um, just some details, and then where are we are now. So the next slide. So, um, how did this all start? Um, in our school district, we had, um, uh, site-based board meetings, meaning we have board meetings right after school that are specifically, they're open to anyone, but they're specifically for our staff. Um, and the year we went and did our site meetings, we had massive turnout. And any time there's massive turnout, we'd go in and like, uh-oh, let's get ready for what's about to happen. And our staff let us know that they were fed up, they were tired, um, that they were, they had reached a point where they couldn't, you know, they needed help, and that the, um, possibility of us losing more staff is going to be highly likely. We were already losing, um, twenty to twenty-five percent of our staff turnover every year. And, um, they were like, we, we were just challenging the board, we need to do something about it. We, as we all know, we do not, we are educators, we're not, point blank. And when I say educators, anyone who is in the school walls, for me, working, is an educator. You know, my students, um, and my teacher, uh, when I was a child, I mean, when I was a child, I had so many teachers, and for my kids, you know, they were close, they were to the facility and to the cafeteria than they were to their teachers. So everyone is an educator, and all of our educators were saying to us that, um, we needed, they needed help. And so we looked at this in multiple, we passed a parcel tax, but we also were looking at housing, because when we polled the staff, um, we were surprised at the results that the number one reason they were looking to leave wasn't due to pay, it was due to, um, housing and their ability to sustain fine-to-go housing. So that put the look in us to kind of, um, look into what our, uh, uh, Community College District had done to think about workforce housing for our district. Um, so when we went about the concept, we wanted to see if we could find something, um, that would fit in the creators that we had in the park lot, um, as a way that we can make it so that rents would be affordable, below market, that we can use it as a recruitment tool, and it hadn't cost us, we didn't want it to, uh, be more strain on our general judgment. Next slide. So again, this was a feasibility study that we did, um, and, um, we reviewed similar projects, so again, looking at the San Mateo County Community College District. We surveyed our staff, um, we did a property assessment, which I'm sure you've all been through, and then we did a financial analysis. We formed a subcommittee, which Andy and I are the board members. Um, and we also had a member of our union on the subcommittee, our members of administration. Um, and we looked into, uh, the number of units that we thought would be feasible and how we would pay for it. So again, it's very small, but if you see the feasibility study, you see some of the feedback that we got. Um, and we saw, when we did the, the question that really impacted Andy and I the most was the question of how many of our staff are looking to be in this district? And so, um, the response to that, it was about a third. And so that kind of spurred us to say, let's build a million housing to get a third of our staff. If we know a third of them are going to be doing the housing, let's get a third of the housing. And then the conversation is, how do we pay for housing? Or, I mean, how do we pay for, um, a hundred and twenty units, a hundred and twenty houses? And so that's what we came up with, a bond under the city. Next slide.
All right, so you can see this is a little hard to oversee, so over here, but, um, a few things that, that, you're available. Perfect, that's why I'm here. Okay, so there's a few things that we had to do with, with regards to marketing internally, uh, because that's, because ultimately, if you wanted to make sure that all the staff could understand what was up there about to do. So we want to make sure that our messaging was very clear to the district. So in particular, we wanted to make sure that our messaging plan, and, and we had enough messaging plan and make sure that our entire district administrative team and board use that same messaging. And the questions that we would get, which I'm sure some of you probably, probably already heard, why don't you just pay the staff more? Why don't you just use the money from housing to give to the staff? Staff don't want to live in dorms, staff don't want to live next door to their coworkers. We should address all of that later in the presentation. But we also want to make sure that we already have staff buying. And very specifically, as Kalima already mentioned, we had a member of our union on our, on our housing subcommittee team, and, and we also even had a, a second member who also joined for several weeks. We want to make sure we have the union workforce backing this before we started doing the outreach to the public. If we, Kalima mentioned about the side, we used for staff. We also made sure that the staff understood the, the, our, our district budget. It's amazing how many educators actually don't understand how public education is actually funded. And so we wanted to make sure that our educators understood why it was that we could not pay them anymore, and what the structural impacts were there. We also made, make sure, make sure that everybody understood that higher pay and housing are two different things. We also wanted to build high-quality housing, and we had to make sure that, as well, that we had high-quality renderings and visuals to help sell the messaging. And there will be an example of that on our next slide. And again, we had, we had members of our union on our subcommittee. And right there was one of the amazing renderings we had, which as you can see, actually looks pretty much like the final product. Next slide. All right, you want to talk about this, Kalima?
Sure, so following up, um, before we started this process at all, we made sure that our entire board was on board. Um, so we aren't going to go out into the public with something that we already know was controversial at that time. It was now a lot of K-12s are talking about it, and when we were doing it, you know, a lot of K-12s were really actively moving forward. So we, we were already the focal point of a lot of social media posts. And so we knew we didn't want board members going out and not speaking with the same voice and being united around this. So we had a meeting to make sure, you know, hey, I'll be all united. And the other thing was like checking our egos. Andy and I were the subcommittee, and we were the ones that were assigned to be the speakers for it, and all the rest of the board was just going to follow our lead because, uh, we wanted to be nimble. So we were also empowered to make a lot of decisions at the subcommittee level, and, and our board trusted us to do that, uh, because, uh, it was a sense of urgency in my district as a mother, you know, uh, four of the board members that did part of this process have been parents in the district. And my own personal story, um, my senior year, my son was, my son's senior year in high school, every single one of his special education teachers left, every single one. So for my own children, I can tell, we are not offering adequate quality education for my own child. And I know that it comes with privilege, you know, school will never come with privilege. And I could not even exercise that privilege for my own child, let alone what's happening for all the other kids. And so that sense of urgency, um, we need to do something to ensure that when I walk into the community and somebody says, is Jefferson Community High School District offered a quality education? I can say yes. Um, the community outreach, we went to every single elected official, we went to as many community-based organizations as possible, we had our faculty to go to put the gates on board in our Chamber of Commerce. Um, and again, we went with the same talking points and, and, um, let people know the answers to those questions that were on the, the slide beforehand, so that we weren't the only ones, um, spreading the message that other people can answer those questions too. Why don't you just give the teachers the money that you're going to raise with the bond? We all know you can't use bond money, it doesn't go with the general money. You can't use bond money for that, it's more time money. You know, why don't you just pay teachers more? You know, two-thirds of our, of our budget already goes to teachers, kind of, and even staff pay and benefits. There's no more water getting from this rock, it's, it's blood dry.
And even if we could pay twenty thousand dollars a year more, they still couldn't afford to live here in San Mateo County.
The wealthiest school district, and we have some really wealthy school districts in San Mateo County, no school district in San Mateo County pays enough for their staff to live here, none. And we're one of the lowest for the high schools districts in San Mateo County. So unless we were to pass a parcel tax, uh, for astronomical amount of money, we had to find another solution. And then the other thing, and this is a real problem in the Bay Area, more than one thing is can be true at a time, at a time. We need to pay our teachers more, absolutely, and we also need to find a way to get them to school housing. Just because we do one doesn't cancel out the other. So just making sure that people understood that, just because we're, we're moving for workforce housing doesn't mean we stop fighting for additional funding, we're doing all of the things. Next slide.
All right, so the funding of, of this, the overall, overall project cost was seventy-five and a half million dollars. Thirty-three million of it was provided through the voter group bond, Measure J, in June of twenty eighteen, and that passed actually at fifty-five point eight percent. And what, you know, historically, for our district, our bonds typically passed up well over sixty percent. This was definitely a case where voters didn't understand what we were trying to do despite all of our outreach. And in fact, just a quick story about this. This was, as you may recall, this was the first all-male and ballot election in San Mateo County. And in our district, the ballots in Pacifica and, and, and Brisbane tended to get, get counted earlier, and after those cities had come through on Election Day in June, we were down at about fifty-two, fifty-two and a half percent. As the daily city ballots came in, daily city typically comes in and votes on Election Day. It took two weeks for those votes to be counted, but it was about two weeks later that Kalima and I were on a call, we saw the numbers, saw the numbers, and we, and we were practically broke down in tears, actually, when, when, when that came. I mean, it was, it was amazing that it actually happened. And finally, the remaining forty-two and a half million dollar balance is paid through a C O B certificate participation that is secured by the rent, uh, rent revenues on the building. Next slide. So a few details about the building. Hundred and twenty-two units with fifty-one bedroom homes, nine one-bedroom units, uh, nine one, one-bedroom plus units, basically those actually equal, they have, they have built then, fifty-six two-bedroom units and seven three-bedroom units. Uh, amenities, this is anything you would find in a typical warranty-grade product, fitness center, we do also have laundry rooms on every floor, playgrounds, a community room for a community gathering space, also common workrooms and, and lounges, and those are actually quite popular. There's one on every floor, and staff will ask us either to socialize, or sometimes even just to get away and collaborate together, or even just get away from their families to just do some work. Uh, in the laundry rooms, we built more laundry than was needed, because guess what? They all work the exact same schedule. So, so there's laundry room number four, one is open twenty-four hours, the other, you're open until ten AM.
Yeah, we were intentional with the design because, you know, again, to battle back this meant that we're building dorms, we're not building dorms, we're building homes. And, you know, seeing where you get frightened by people who work in the school district, and you would see some of the stories that they could post about living and you would see some of the stories that they could post about living in housing where it was hard to grade because of the noise, their roommates are just having family there and having to go to Starbucks sometimes to read papers. We see posts like, "In Starbucks, reading papers." It is a crime that the people who are raising up the next years don't have adequate housing. And so when we built this, we didn't want to give them another, you know, another space that was inadequate. So we'd be thoughtful in saying, can we build that version of Starbucks where they would go, just put it in a unit in different places? And we have seen a lot of collaboration and institutional work, not just in the same school, but in similar fields and other schools working together and collaborating. And this myth that, you know, they don't want to live next to people they work with is not true. Andy was building different parties in there.
Yeah, the community room actually truly is a place for community. They do have many events, it's always booked every, every weekend, it's free for the staff to use. We, we know stories of staff from the same school who would have classrooms right next to each other, and they have their apartment units right next to each other. I mean, there are, there are little neighborhoods within the building, and many staff have commented to us how much they've just enjoyed meeting their colleagues from other campuses and being able to live that way. So the next step that we had to do while we were under construction was to develop the Educational Housing Corporation. So in April 2020, we established the Theory J-West Educational Housing Corporation, which is a nonprofit corporation that manages the operations of 705 Ceremony. This is the entity that separates the operation of the building from the school board. Because we don't want residents complaining about their neighbors coming to a school board meeting. They should go to the board of the Educational Housing Corporation or something like that. So the EHC itself oversees the management of operations budget, resident rules, resident eligibility, and also hires a third-party property manager that manages the building.
And this is, yeah, and this is the part that's the hardest part about this, you know, not to be all sunny. But, you know, when someone doesn't work for us, they no longer live here, and we have to be tight on that rule. So not re-elected, et cetera, they have to move out. And, and being a member of this body, that is not an easy thing. You know, now I see these problems with being a landlord, that is not an easy thing to do. You know, dealing with what happens when a very popular staff member moved in here with his family and then passed away a few months later. And so having to have that conversation about the rules that we have, that the, the, we tried to offer a job to the spouse that was living, they didn't want to, they, they're also an educator, they didn't want to switch to our district. So you have to, it's part of the bond, you have to work for the district in order to live here. So having to ask people, don't work for the district to be. And, you know, knowing that you have to stay strong with rules, that it's in my heart to want to be flexible, but you have to, you know, have the same rules for everybody, because you don't want to go down that slippery slope. But these are just things that you wouldn't see on the horizon, and we are now having to deal with in just, you know, full transparency that there are some things that are challenging.
Right. And the board itself is currently comprised of two non-resident staff, three community members, and two school board members. So these are just a handful of photos from our grand opening celebration, which coincided with us celebrating the centennial of the district in May of 2022. Fantastic. It was actually wonderful to have many members of our community, many of our fellow school board colleagues from throughout the county came to help celebrate with us. And to be able to celebrate, at least at that point, roughly 25 or 30 residents who had just moved in. Next slide. And where are we, where we are today? So here's, here's some, some of the fun stuff. We are 100% fully occupied. There are 15 staff on the waitlist. So going back to that one-third rule, one-third that Cleve mentioned earlier, we are currently housing 25% of our staff, and another 15 staff are on the waitlist. 55% certificated, 45% classified. So for those who don't know, that's 55% teachers and 45% other staff. And the residents represent the full range of staff. Currently, the maximum stay is five years, although we are about to discuss in the next few months, raise that to seven or eight years. The lease is on grave on annual lease, that is, by one-year lease, that is renewable annually for up to five years currently. Average rent for a one-bedroom is $1,400 a month, average rent for a two-bedroom is $1,890 a month, and average rent for a three-bedroom is $2,400. Anybody want to jump in?
And then the thing about this, why we're so thrilled that it's 100% full, is we didn't build what, we built more than what employees said that they wanted. So we asked staff how many people would be interested in, in living. Only 65 said they would be absolutely interested in living, but we built to the data point of the third that said they were going to leave due to inadequate housing. And then just hope that if we build it, they actually would come. And, and so that was a gamble, because if they didn't come, then it possibly would have, we would not be able to pay back the COB, or we would have to have raised the rents, and we really didn't want to do that. So we are thrilled that it is 100% full, and not just 100% full, but there is a waiting list. The other thing that was important, and one of the lessons that we, we took away from our community college district is they said that they also built to what the staff said that they wanted, and then later wished that they had built to need, because they had to go back and build two more developments. And we know that every day the delay in housing, it goes up millions of dollars. It's just crazy how much it is to build anything, and every day the delay, the price goes up. So delayed by years, it's going to cost way more than if you just built it when you, in the first phase. So initially, we had planned multiple phases to maybe get up to 122, and then decided, let's just build it all right now and do it as economical as possible. And it did, it paid off for us.
And it also took us nearly a year, a little over a year, to get to full occupancy, because there were obviously a lot of staff that were in other leases that they had to wait to, to end before moving in, which also allowed us to have plenty of units available for those, for recruiting purposes. We actually got to a point by mid-summer where our principals were telling staff, stop talking about housing because we actually were already full. So it's a nice problem to have. Lastly, at least, you know, the other piece is, the past two years, at the start, we have been 100% fully staffed as a district on day one of the school year, the past two years.
Never happened in my entire time as a school board member. In fact, we actually had our principal teaching a math, I mean, our superintendent was teaching a math class at one point, because we just could not find a math teacher. So to now, and then, you know, as board members, we get our board act and more reports, and the Human Resources report was always like the hardest thing to look at, and we'd be halfway through this year and still trying to fill spots. And to now, get our HR report, and it's sometimes like, you know, it's just, I think there's no words.
So I think that is all that we've got.
With the start of opening constantly and widespread teacher shortages in the nation, school districts are being forced to get creative with how they retain and recruit qualified staff. To initiate this issue, Jefferson Union High School District opened the District's Affordable Educational Housing Room at 705 Ceremony in the spring of 2022. One of the first in the nation, this newly constructed 122-unit apartment community is exclusively available to our faculty and staff. Our housing has been a great tool for retaining staff and recruiting from across the nation. We were challenged with what we could offer teachers, and this provides a great resource to not only retain our staff, but help them with their dreams. We take a lot of pride in that.
Main goal of the project is to reduce turnover and to make us more competitive in how could we make it more affordable for our teachers and staff to live and work in our area, so that our students can have teachers that stay year after year and can have a stable and稳定的 Really with the staff housing, it just shows how devoted they are to recruiting and retaining. That alone just makes Jefferson unique, because they're one of the first in the country.
When I heard that Jefferson High School District is building housing for teachers, that would be a great help, especially with my high access.
We want stability for our students. So we thought that one thing we could do is provide that, with some stability of staff staying year after year. And it's helpful, because we want to be fully staffed each school year. Oh my God, I love it. This is the best decision I made for myself.
I think the Bay Area is so expensive, costs are rising, it's hard to find an apartment in San Francisco unless you're living with a roommate. It's such a beautiful new apartment complex, I was blown away at what they were able to create.
We wanted to make sure that this housing was very nice. We wanted it to be not hard with any market rate development. And so making sure there were ample spaces for people to gather, spaces for children. We want it to be family-friendly, we have a playroom, we have outdoor play structures for both Jeffersons and Wolversons. And we put laundry on every floor, because we knew that everyone had the same work schedule. And so we didn't want people to have to wait for a unit.
The structural design is so good, I can't hear anything, I don't hear any many words. I have my privacy, but then I also have opportunity to connect with community too.
I think this space is so welcoming, they have a community center, a fitness room, their desk, their boys are helpful, maintenance.
With this housing, it gives me a, where certainly people have an easy access to all kinds of transportation.
And the highway being right here, I mean, the location cannot have been more perfect. I get on the highway and I'm at work in six minutes. Aside from being close to my job site, we also have the Ceremony Shopping Center downstream.
And even I could just walk down the hill, just to go to the walls.
We have already seen benefits from the housing project. We were able to start our school year fully staffed with teachers when some of our surrounding districts weren't able to do that. The students in Jefferson Union High School District deserve everything that any other student in any other district receives, and I am hopeful that this will improve education for them.
I needed my own space, and this was opportunity here to stay in the Bay Area, be close to my family, and be able to work.
Anyone who is looking to teach in the area and is looking for a comfortable and lovely place to live, this is such a great opportunity for you.
For other districts that are considering building employee housing, I would encourage them to move forward. I think having a united board, having a union leadership that supports the idea, and including everyone when you're making plans would be my recommendations, and I say go for it.
Visit our website to learn more about how we turn this idea into a reality.
Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. So in the spirit of just children and families, the heart of why we're here, y'all definitely deserve, you know, a former teacher, a strong clap. How we do this, I think we have some kids in the house, is it goes like this, three, two, one, huh, clap. Because y'all did some strong work. So let's do that, everybody, in the spirit of children and families, that's why we're here, right? So ready, three, two, one, huh! And that goes straight into what, you know, we're going to get into our Q and A, right? Our Q and A, and we're going to start with our, with our trustees, and then we're going to go into the community. So if you have a speaker card, please turn it into Evelyn, thank you so much. And I think Evelyn will then bring it to me, we're going to call out the, the visuals who want to speak. But we're going to open it up to Q and A for our architect team and for our amazing Jefferson High team, right? So with that, I'll pass it on to the board members.
Well, thank you, everyone, that was just awesome. Thank you to the architects for the feedback, and then Cleve and Andy for the presentation. It was, it was great to hear what you guys have done for your school district. And to hear that you guys are at full capacity, and, and you don't have any openings. This year, we had to hire lots of people, even from outside of the country, so I do appreciate that. And I'm going to go ahead and pass on the microphone if any of my colleagues would like to ask any questions.
Thank you so much for putting that presentation through us. It's, I think it's very helpful data for us to have as a board to see how this is played out in other geographies. Congrats on hitting 100% occupancy. I'm curious if we're now where the Jefferson EHC is cash flow neutral?
Yeah, we did a good presentation.
We're bringing in more than we need, so we're holding it. You know, we, we have to, right now, we're in the phase of what happens next, because this is not permanent. This is temporary housing, in five to seven years, maybe more. And so now we're thinking about, especially for our classified employees who make less, you know, what, what do we need to do to ensure they can save enough where there's a plan in the ground? And so part of that is like savings, and is it possible for us to match? So with the extra money, you know, that's one of the things we're thinking about, maybe using that to help match. So there's just different things that we do, but we have additional money that's helping.
And we're also saving up just for regular maintenance, for, for, because obviously it's a brand-new building, but we need to build that, build up that reserve, we spoke to the other folks who've done, who've done this where they did save. And 20 years later, they're struggling to find a way to pay for maintenance.
Great, thanks, Pierre Martin, for presenting. I do have a couple of questions for Andy and Cleve. Since you hit full occupancy, has that been constant in your attention? Is that another thing you have to deal with, the waitlist, or is that just, this didn't even exist before?
Yeah, yeah, pretty, pretty much. You know, those who are on the waitlist, some of them are people who probably waited just a little too long to make the decision to move. And then in some cases, they're just, as a new hire, just who've just been told, we have a waitlist, and, you know, hopefully your trip will come up in the near future.
Great, and then one of the, you had mentioned that you can switch from five years to seven years. Are you thinking about switching from five years to seven years? What were sort of some of the factors behind, maybe initially between five and why it's into seven?
One of the things is that the community college district, that could be, had, is that seven years. They had moved up from five to seven, because it's just going to take that long. There may be some, some residents who are saving for down payment on the home, so it's going to take a little longer, and certainly in the case of classified folks, we want them, want to make sure they're able to save sufficiently, so they can have the funds needed for their next move, you know, whether it's another affordable place or a possible market rate.
So, you know, I think we needed to start, so we should start somewhere. But I think now the discussion is looking like, what is fiscally possible for our staff? Because what we don't want to do is like, if it's, if we pick just seven, and then seven years from now, no one is able to afford to move out, and we're asking to move out, and it's still, we don't want to be right back where we were. So really looking at how, you know, fiscally, what is going to take? Is it feasibly possible for one of our teachers making a certain salary, saving up the money to put a down payment on? And what do we need to do to help support that and get them to start saving? We had a lot of discussion. As you see, our rates are really affordable, so they, they do have money. But what happens from somebody that's not used to having extra spending money, that is now has extra spending money, they want to spend it, they think they want to be able to get it for yet. So how do we incentivize saving? What do we do to support? Right now, we're looking at an educational series that we're going to have in, in the community room that brings people in to talk about savings, to talk about the different ways you can save, the different banking and market rate, I mean, market access and the different accounts that they can use. Working with the county to see if we can get some of our classified staff on affordable housing lists. And the wait, like, the average wait time should be around six to seven years, so is that enough time to get picked up for affordable housing? You know, so having all of these discussions now, and having some, some, some lead time, you know, putting in the work now.
Thank you, everyone, and for all of our presenters tonight, I appreciate it. For Andy and Cleve, I assume you have de-structured units? Curious how it's been managing now, if you have any issues with that?
No issues whatsoever, and the city of Daily City required 10% interregional area, and we're so proud of our units to meet that requirement, and they are not tied to a specific unit. So it's just, we just have to make sure that there's always 12 units available to meet that.
And then also, the waiting list isn't by the number you signed up. We have the ability to, and people know in the waiting list that if we, we want to keep the ratio of the staff matching the ratio in the housing. So if you're classified on the waiting list, it may be a priority, because they want to keep those ratios. So if you're classified on the waiting list, it may be a priority because they wanna keep those ratios.
Thank you very much to all the speakers, thanks to the architects. That was great to kind of vision ahead what we might be seeing. So thank you, and thank you, Peter, for your part. And a special thank you to our guests, Kalima and Andy. I've known you since the very beginning. We've worked on a lot of things together over the years. And I'm such a fan of your school district and the two of you and your leadership in workforce housing. So appreciate you coming here. That was the traffic I know to get here, it's not easy on a Thursday night. And just to share with our community what a project this could be. And in case you don't know, I've been an advocate for workforce housing from the beginning. When we first started thinking about it, as part of, you know, we were re-envisioning Redwood City School District back in, I think, 2016, 2017, ultimately in 2018. We made some changes to our schools given declining enrollment that we had seen. We knew that we need to get our finances in order so we can continue to provide a high quality education for our students and be able to take care of our staff. And we also have been hearing about housing. It's a, it's an obvious thing, lots of districts have been thinking about it. And so we started to think about where we could do workforce housing in our school district, where we have properties. Really, most of our properties, and you know, a couple of them did become available through this re-imagining process that we went through. We're now leasing those sites out, actually, so making money for the school district. And those sites were really, they're, they're really not appropriate for large numbers of workforce housing. You could do very small residential housing, you know, maybe could go up a couple of stories. And then the downtown site became a pretty obvious place because if you look around downtown Redwood City, you are seeing six, eight, 10-story buildings, right? And so we can get more, um, units on, on an acre, right? And then we had an opportunity, Sabrata came to us, thank you, you've been a great partner all along. We had, um, a lot of closed session conversations because we've been negotiating property. And we've had a few open sessions where along the way, you know, we've talked about this. This is kind of the first time where I think this had a more lengthy conversation. And it's been great to hear from you as leaders, Kalima and Andy, to really think about what this could mean for our district. And, you know, so many of the points that you made is why I'm an advocate for it. Our, um, our teachers, our staff, our educators, Kalima, I like the way you talked about that. And, you know, every, every person who's at a school site in the district office, they're educators, they're here for our students and our families. And they deserve to live in the community they work in. They, they wanna live here. They wanna be a part of the community. And they deserve high quality housing, just like everybody else, right? And so I'm so excited for this. You know, one of the things that we've been spending the last couple of years on is thinking about financing. And we know that we have a financial plan that we can do that will not impact the general fund. Because in case you don't know, for those of you who don't know, that funding in California for education is crazy. There's all sorts of different buckets. And the general fund bucket is typically what pays for your salaries of all of your educators in your school setting. And so we wanna make sure that the workforce housing does not impact that. So it's, it's an and, like Kalima said. We will continue to work for more money so we can continue to provide for salaries. But there's also this opportunity. There's another opportunity through loans, which basically that's what the certificates of participation. Like the loan that you would take out if you took out a mortgage on your house, right? So it's a loan, and we're able to pay back the loan with the rents. We also have a bond, right? And part of the bond, in the bond language, talks about the ability to have workforce housing. And so, and then we also have private funding that we've been asking, right? And we have a public private partnership with Sabrata. So we have a lot of wins. And so what I, what I, you know, I don't really have these specific questions. I think you kind of heard a little bit of my thinking. I really wanna hear from, um, community members, some of the questions that you have. Certainly from our staff who are here, thank you for being here tonight. If you don't have an opportunity or you don't feel like making a public comment, we are certainly open to, you know, send us an email. We will be adding on the website a place for people to go and provide a comment. And so we wanna hear from you, you know, this is the time. And I'm personally very excited about the journey that we're on together. And thank you again, Kalima and Andy, for being here.
Thanks again. And I do have a question. How did you determine, um, who would start filling in those units? And for example, the three bedrooms? There's a lot of people in this generation that don't have kids yet. So were you able to rent it to those that have kids? Or to those like that have women and that were willing to live with those people for four or five years?
I don't remember the specific details, but we did do, we did actually do a prioritization based on both their total household income, whether they're sophisticated or classified, whether they're full-time or part-time, um, and whether they had previously owned a property or not. So those who I think still probably were, were a lot of the workers. But this was for the initial reset process and for, and then, then it became, they put their names in the 1B, then it became actually a random draw for very specific types of units. With regards to your question on the three bedrooms, there were actually a handful of people that actually put in. For those of the seven units, I think initially only five. We stopped it and took, took a few months before the other two remaining, uh, three bedrooms stopped. But they are, we stopped two families of, of four or five. And, and, right, and we do have minimum requirements, occupancy requirements of each type of unit.
And then my other question would be, um, you talked about the education or educational housing committee? So at what point do you like draw the line where you as trustees come up with the rules or regulations? And then you pass it on to the opinions, Kalima, please?
So the trust, so we serve in two different positions. So we're trustees, and the board of trustees doesn't make any decisions about the housing. We're two, we have two, we're two voting members of a larger body of the, at the housing committee. So that body makes decisions. So Andy and I, we both feel a way about something and can be outvoted by the other members of the committee. So that's the body that makes the decisions. Nothing should go to the board or to administrative staff. We have one staff member whose job is to help manage employees around the housing, but he does not make any decisions, he does not handle complaints. Employees know that if there's an issue with the housing, they could go to the management company. And if the management company can't solve it, it's elevated to, um, the housing committee if their solution isn't already answered and the rules for the committee.
And the other piece was that early after the establishment of the, of the EHC, Educational Housing Corporation Board, there were board subcommittees that would develop to determine rules, to determine eligibility, and to determine finances. And as well as the selection of the, to make a recommendation on the selection of the third-party property manager. So, so, so all those subcommittees in conjunction with our third-party property manager helped develop the rules.
And the board, you mean the EHC?
The EHC board, not the school, not the school board.
Ask a follow-up question. Yeah, um, so did, did the school board give some direction to the educational corporation board? Like some of the higher level parameters? I'm assuming so. I mean, you know, we don't need to get into that level of detail here today, I guess that can be a follow-up question.
So no, and the reason why is because no one is ever precedent to tell people like, well, the school board said. And then what if the EHC disagrees? And then so the workaround is to go back to the school board. So if we want everyone from the beginning, you're going to the EHC. Now, do, does the EHC members listen to what Andy and I can say regarding our folks? Yes, you know, we're, we're from the school district and the school board, but at the same time, we're, we're two votes of, of a seven-person party. So we can easily be outvoted. So it's one of us to make sure that we're communicating properly what we believe the district believes.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions from our board, we're gonna move forward, go to our community. Our community members today have three minutes. We have three speakers that have filled out speaker cards so far. Each speaker will get three minutes. You can actually go to the podium, or you can go to any of the bikes on the tables, whichever you most comfortable. If you need Spanish translation, we have that as well. So don't feel shy. You are the community, you are the people. Feel free to ask your questions. That's why we're here. And we have great speakers today with, uh, some great case studies that are happening locally. So this is your chance. Our first speaker will be Chris R.
Thank you. So I wanted to address one topic. For Redwood City, this whole $90 million, this $298 million measure S bonds, that are Prop 39 bonds, despite the fact that that election was being contested. These bonds have been added to people's property tax bill throughout the community. So, and the intent obviously is to use that money, part of that money along with the cops and the, you know, private funding to fund this workforce housing. Two problems with that, first of all. Our, for 13th section 1B of the California Constitution, it's very clear, we have right here, but in short, it clearly says that Prop 39 bond money is to be used for school facilities and know what their purpose is. It's very clear about what it can be used for, and it's very clear what it can be used for, school facilities. Workforce housing and a new district office is not a school facility, full stop period. So that's the law, that's what's written in, um, and the fact that might be written in the ballot measure of the voter guide is not law, rights protection, and we can write all kinds of things in there. But that's not the law, so the constitution hits. So unless there's some law, I'm not aware of, that says that's allowed, that's unauthorized, and then the Prop 39. So I wanna make that very clear. The second issue is, and obviously I totally agree with your goal that was articulated by the moderator about attracting retained teachers. So how can this be done? There are other ways to do this, right? I forwarded this to all the trustees. There is a bigger housing finance authority. There's tens of billions of dollars that we can look at. It's gonna be on the 2024 ballot for affordable housing. So there's other ways to do this. With respect to, so this is in general, my opinion, now you have the policy side, the sub-opportunity answer on how to attract retained teachers. So I did a public records request, and forty, out of 122 units at JUS, Jefferson High School, 57 are teachers, right? And out of the 120, so it's 47%. The rest are like custodians and things like that. Nothing wrong with paying for custodian's housing, but with a lot of other people in the community, but also you might kind of fund somewhere to stop. So that's, that's the numbers, less than half are teachers. And then for San Mateo Community College District, it's out of there, it's only 24% of their units. With 140 units, 25 are faculty. And the rest, so it's more than three-quarters are not, which maybe that's why that wasn't presented, I don't know. But San Mateo Community College has more than three-quarters not occupied. So it doesn't really, and it doesn't hit the question, is this something that's, um, that's effective for, do teachers want to do it, especially when your boss is bottom two-story? And furthermore, can they qualify, right? I don't know what the qualifications are, that might be something to address. I don't know if the survey could talk about that, but they just told people that maybe it's based on household income, not individual income. So how does that all work? So, I mean, in summary, I just think there are other ways to do this. And I do think the parcel tax is a better way to do it, give people housing vouchers and attract them that way. So, thank you, Chris.
Just to clarify, I got a couple of questions. First one is, is there some law that you need to be aware of around the building of these units? Second one is, do teachers really want to do this? And is that, so are those the two questions that you want us to unpack today?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I will pass it on to any of our speakers.
Yeah, the Trazz Act of 2016 actually makes it, basically allows for any district to be able to utilize, any funding available for school districts to fund can be used for, in the scope of educational housing. And then there's been some legislation over the years that have actually helped tighten all of that. We would not have been able to throw to a bond measure for 2018 had the Trazz Act not been implemented at that time. The other, and so I'll leave that to them.
The other thing is, um, if you, have you ever been in an elementary school bathroom? Custodians are next to God, and I would give you to them a house if I could. To, we, COVID taught us a lot. And the people who were most needed in schools were the people that, your melon is not teachers, right? Teachers are needed, but we need people to clean the rooms. We need paraprofessionals who are not getting our qualifications, teachers who are absolutely, we need substitute teachers who don't fall in your qualifications protocol, teachers who are absolutely needed to run a school. We need cafeteria workers. Because one of the biggest complaints that we got on our students was that the food is terrible. And they didn't eat. And we know that how important feeding hungry children are, but if we're giving them substandard food, then they don't learn. So a lot of people who are living there that don't fit their quote-unquote qualification as teachers are also feeding our students. So are teachers vital? Absolutely. But a community is part of this school district. There's been lots of people who fill lots of roles and, um, that are just as important as the people who are standing in front of the class giving instructions. So I would push back that, um, on disqualifying it because there's not enough people that are filling the category that you think is important enough to get housing too. And, um, anyone who's working in service to our students, and, you know, my son would not have graduated from high school if it wasn't for his paraprofessional, you know? And that's one of the people that are, that you're saying doesn't fit into the full, full teacher role. The other thing is the funding. The reason why we're funding it this way, um, so LA had a huge problem because they used federal money to fund their housing. And when you use federal money, it has to be affordable, 100% affordable. A lot of teachers are, are making more money than that. And so they could not put many teachers into their housing because they made too much money. The other issue with the federal guidelines, there's a lot of issues, but it also put limits on asking people to leave. So a lot of, they couldn't, when the staff turned over or went to another position, they could not ask their staff to remove themselves from the housing because of the federal money that they received. Which is why we went about this and saying that we could find other ways to fund it, like a bond. So we wouldn't be held to those same constraints and have much more control over our housing.
The other piece, I'm not sure, uh, the timestamp with regards to data that you've had pulled, but as of today, with 55% certificated in the building, we have, of the 122 units, they are occupied by 127 staff. So at 55%, that's about 70 of them are teachers in the building.
Thank you for your question. We're gonna move on to the next speaker. Elizabeth Starks will have three minutes. Miss Elizabeth.
Thank you. I am a resident of Redwood City, and I also speak Spanish and can translate for all the beautiful parents that are here. And I'm very, very happy that you are interested in what is going on in the school district. I raised four children, and luckily I was also an ESL teacher. And I was committed to be like a mother for each kid in my class. This was very important for me. And the most important thing when I moved to Redwood City, I noticed that I live very close to our middle school and elementary school. And all the kids are coming out of the school and they are meeting at the pizza area. And you can see them eating on the floor, all of them, 20 kids. And that breaks my heart because the Spanish community should be more important than the teachers do. The teachers, of course, they make more money than many parents. Many parents are working really hard. They are working, they stay the whole day, and they come home and they're exhausted. And those kids are alone. So we should build more places for kids where they can be together and they can play sports for free. They can be swimming for free. This is my point, this is what I'm thinking. I live in Germany, I live in Europe, I live in Israel, I live, I do many languages. And I help the people when I go to a community, I help. So right now, I'm asking you, if you're going to hire teachers because they don't have any money, please hire teachers that they teach history, math, English, Spanish, other language. The most important thing for those kids, we need to think about the new generation, not to destroy them and not to spoil them. We need to think about that. So I'm very happy that you are building very good communities for. So I'm very happy that you are building very good communities for teachers. But where are the kids? The most important things are the kids for me. My children were raised with me when I was very young. I was taking care of them and I was a house mom. And they were very quiet. The school teachers that were coming to me and telling me, oh, your kids are very quiet. They are not studying enough or anything. And I said, because they respect the teachers. They love the teachers. They, I taught them not to speak up, not to stand up and not to scream at them. I taught my kids very well, four of them. I raised them well. They are professionals.
Thank you, Ms. Starks. We appreciate you being here. So the questions I just wanted to clarify that you were asking prior earlier. Where are the kids in this plan? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So for either landscape, you think more or just me, I'm ready to take this.
I'll take it on. We went into this with the kids in mind first. Because if you're experiencing 35, if 35% of our staff at the time I'm in this survey were going to leave the district due to the cost of housing, we cannot take care of our kids. If you're experiencing 25% turnover of staff annually, we're not taking care of our kids. So if we have educators who are struggling with housing security, we're not taking care of our kids. They won't be able to take care of our kids because they're worried about their needs. So we have to provide for our, our educational staff to ensure that all the programs that we want to offer our students are available and that we can also continue to build on the programs year after year to improve. If we are stuck constantly hiring and retraining 25% of our staff every year, we are always going to start back at zero every year.
Tell me again, I'm sorry. Elizabeth, hello. Um, so I, I'm glad I'm a single mother. And I was raising three kids in, in all of our schools. And the reason why I became a school board member was not to become a developer, right? I never worked for a school board. It's like, oh, you know, I'm going to be a major developer one day, but that was not the goal. I went into this to take care of the kids. And knowing what my students and, and knowing what, I can say my students and the same students and kids, that what my kids have gone through, going through the school district and the hardship they faced because of inadequate touch base. And it is, we know in communities of color, it is really hard to find qualified teaching staff who want to teach there. And that's because through a whole lot of historic suppression, our property taxes are lower and property taxes should not be tied to educational funding, but it is. And so we have, we can pay less. In other places where people don't look like us, their, their, their teachers are paying more. And that is the reality. Is this solution perfect? Absolutely not the perfect solution. California would get off its behind and fund schools the way they need to fund it so we can take care of all the kids and fund schools equitably. So the students that have the most need get the most money. But that's not the reality we live in. So I did what I did with the cards that we had to serve the students in the best way that I could. And one of the ways that I know, I can tell you right now, that my son, because he had wonderful teachers, he was just blessed with wonderful teachers through freshman, through junior year, was able to survive, and I'm not using that word lightly, as an autistic child, survive a year where every single one of his trusted teachers were gone. And he had terrible teachers, terrible. But there was no option that I can give. We can't say let that teacher go and bring in a better teacher if there are no other teachers, if there are no other paraprofessionals, if there are, you know, students coming in and saying the bathrooms are disgusting. We can't fire the custodian and get a better one if no custodian wants to work for us because we're paying pennies, pennies, and I can't give them any more money. But this is something that I could do. So in my mind, I am a service student because they have a clean bathroom when they come to school. They can come to school and think that they have a teacher that cares about them. We're 100% staff and we have more people that want to work for us. So if a teacher isn't living up to their potential, we have the option now to let him go and get somebody else qualified who wants to live in our housing. We aren't wasting money, hiring a bunch of people, training them, and then having them go get better paid jobs somewhere else. And it's a constant, constant improvement. We aren't having horrible morale of our staff because they're having to carry the extra weight of teachers that are there just watching, come in and out, come in and out, come in and out. And they're having to carry all this weight. So are there other issues as public educators? Are there other ways that we're failing students? Absolutely, absolutely. And just because we built teacher housing doesn't let that off the book. We still need to do a better job in other areas, but you have to give us the tools to do that. And the best tool to do that is to have a qualified staff who aren't worried about where they need to sleep at night. So they can take care of the kids while we handle the other problems of the board of our housing for all of our students, making sure all our students have the things they need in their community, make sure that the community is safe for all of our students. Those don't go away just because we built the housing. We need to care about all of those things. And then that's what I'm committed to doing. And I know you're a school board member as well, and I know they're committed to doing it too.
Elizabeth, you had a little bit of a follow up.
Yeah, I would like to reframe that the parents here, they have a lot of things to say and maybe you can join the parents to become teachers. Maybe you can have something more important for them, mothers. I was part of a school board in Bolingay. I was a PTA. I spent four hours every day and I have to go to work at 3 o'clock in the afternoon until 10 o'clock at night. I have three jobs. But the teachers, if you love the children, you don't care how much money you make. Well, not in California, because in California you can only leave. When the property taxes come to my house that I worked really hard to have it and I'm not going to be able to pay the property taxes because they're, they're going to evacuate my house, I'm going to be moving. And this is going to happen to everybody. So instead of building all these low-income houses, build low-income houses for these families who need help. You need to think about the families who are low-income. That's my.
Thank you for your comment, Jennifer. We appreciate you. We're going to move forward. There was no question. If anyone has any other speaker cards, ask them over here. Thank you. We're going to go for Maria Stockton. You have 30 minutes to.
My name is Maria Stockton. I'm a leader here for the classified union of Redwood City Chapter 5. We cover parent educators, office staff, food service, technology department, custodians, facilities and many others. Thanks to food service, technology department and office staff, we came in and worked during the COVID time at our sites. This school district would not be able to run, especially without the technology department. Our parent educators and instructional assistants were online every day teaching your children, just as a teacher did. So there are people, if you go into a classroom, you can take out a teacher and see that classroom is still running. Because the parent educators or instructional assistants are just as qualified. So I really take offense to you just talking about teachers and putting down classifieds. And I thank you for supporting, thank you. So anyway, as for the presentation, it was given that 1/3 of the teachers that were going to housing. I will tell you, I have been here on my 40, 50 year. So don't tell me classifieds aren't dedicated. All applying paycheck, it's at $200 to go to rent. I, I know John would like to see me retire hopefully in a few years, which I will not be able to qualify for this house. It'll take a lot longer. But people who are coming in now, that the district is striving to pay as much as they can, but it won't be enough. My rent went up $150 last year and $150 this year. The district did not give me a raise of $300 a month to pay for my rent to be able to live here. We have all kinds of international people working here now because we could not build classified and teaching positions. This district is doing the best they can, but they need help for the staff. We are leaving because it's too expensive here in Redwood City. So many of our classifieds, classifieds live over the bridges. They have to come here in long distance to turn around and work in this district. Why? For the money? No, they're dedicated employees that want to stay here. And if they had housing here, at least they would have a few more dollars and relief that they are here and they don't have to worry about accidents or anything else every day that they serve this district. Let's see. If you have parents who are interested in becoming teachers, apply for classified positions. Take the test and this district has assistance to be a teacher. So if you have parents who are interested in being a teacher, have them apply for a job here. The district will assist them if they're truly dedicated to doing that. I love the presentation. I could not see it from here. So if the presentation could be given to me in a hard copy, I would love that. Let's see. Let's see, I'm just, I'm sorry. And I think that's probably all. I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you for all your comments. Let me follow up. All right, she stood up. We're going to report the Lupe Nusma. Lupe Nusma.
First of all, thank you very much for your presentation. It's amazing. I have the pleasure of being the principal here at Redwood Community School. I do a good thing because of my parents live too long so I. And so it really does to this community. We would not function without every member of our staff, without our parents, our wonderful cafeteria ladies who take care of us, our custodians, and of course, our staff, our teachers, our community, our family center. So I know that a lot of them drive a long, long way to get here. And I know that some of our staff live with other families because they can't afford to live here. And I also know that if they could, they would live in Redwood City and that much stronger than our community. Because I remember when I was a little kid, I wonder how long ago. And I would go to the store and I would see my teachers and I would see my principal and I would see the instructional assistants and the yardies. That doesn't happen anymore. And we've lost part of our community because of that. And we need to win that back. Part of what made Redwood City wonderful when I was a kid is that we all knew each other and we took care of each other. And I want that back. And this is part of bringing our community together, part of raising stronger kids. Our kids have lost some of that community, some of that bond, bonding. And it's, it's really sad because we need them to grow up with the values that we're here for each other, that we're taking care of each other and that we are stronger together. And this is a plan that will help bring that back and would help my staff not be so stressed out. And some of my wonderful new teachers have left. They tell me, I love this place. I just, I don't want to live with my parents anymore. So I'm moving down south and I'm moving to Texas. No, no, Texas. And it's been very, very challenging to staff myself, very challenging. And this was definitely hope. So thank you and thank you for being here.
Your comments, we really appreciate you. Thanks for hosting us today and your wonderful staff. We appreciate you. We're going to go on to Ms. Myrna Richardson. Myrna Richardson. Hi, Myrna. You have 30 minutes. Thank you.
I'm interested in teacher housing only because my district is a visiting school board member in San Francisco. And we are talking about that for years. And I know some of the trustees in Jefferson. But my word was kind of housing, are, what is the quality of instruction? Will that last? Or are those exact housing made up of what's now considered, they call it a prefab housing? Or is it from the ground up? Will this, these units hold up over time? And the rents, do they go back to the general fund? And then do the districts do pay down the bond? Or what, what happens to that money? Thank you.
Just to clarify, this is for the project we just saw? Okay, got it.
So the building is ground up. It's, it's steel frame construction, four-story stall. With regards to the, to the, to the rents, then the rents are going into, to pay off the COP and any excess is just going into savings for now that we're reserving for, for future refurb maintenance. At such time that the, that the COP is paid off in 20, 25 years, then those funds will revert back to the general fund of the district.
Thank you. Next speaker, Yannick Gojiz. Yannick Gojiz.
What's that? Hola, buenas tardes. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Yannick Gojiz. Y yo he sido, soy como el distrito por desde 2008. Y este, he sido afectada porque dos veces, dos escuelas aquí le cerradas para mi mismo niño. Porque nos cerraron feos por lo mismo. Que no vía maestros, por favor, las cerraron. Mi escuela elementaria que es este, garfio, pero solo dos cerraron. Y nuestro sexto grado, ya no hay más sexto grado por lo mismo. Y su maestro que tenía quinto grado dice de que su maestro que tenía también se fue por lo mismo del área porque no alcanzaba pagar la renta. O sea, esto es algo que tú viene afectando muchísimo a nosotros y a nuestros hijos. Porque mi hijo está mucha hereje y no se adapta a la escuela que estaba. Primero fue el transporte, el transporte es un desastre que va de, que los llevan de garfio a Macaína. Hay un desastre horrible allí. Nadie me disfunciona, nosotros, cuando yo con mi mamá y muchos papás nos hemos quejado, yo lo que hice, tuve a ese sujeto como mi hijo, llevándolo. Pero los demás no se pueden ir. O sea, no sé en qué nos pueden ayudar. Yo he hablado mucho con nuestras escuelas, con la escuela donde estaba en garfio y la escuela que estaba en Tamaquena. Por lo mismo en el transporte, no sé. Para mí esto sería una buena idea que los ayuden a tener maestros aquí para que ellos puedan estar con nosotros. Porque esto es muy difícil para nosotros como papás. Porque muchos papás dejan sus hijos en el barrio porque no tiene quién los lleve a la escuela. Y nuestros hijos algunos sufren mucho en el barrio. Primero el barrio está gritando, los niños no son nadie, no se tranquilo. Pero hay muchos, muchos problemas feos en nuestros hijos. Bestas.
I am a mother of a kid. And I'm here to talk to you because many, many times we've been through a lot of challenges. My kids were taken out of their homes and then from Garfield. And the community school that is Garfield, they only had circle until sixth grade. For that reason, he was removed. And his teacher, he was in fifth grade. He said that he had to leave this school district because they weren't able to pay for her rent. And that is something that's affected us over and over to us, to our kids as well. Because my kid cannot adapt to any school. And the other aspect is transportation. Transportation is a mess. It's truly very challenging. They, as a mom and many other parents share the same. What I had to do is I had to find my own means of transportation. And this cannot be happening. So I'm not sure how to support us today for whether it's in school or Garfield or whatever else. So that transportation, for me, that would be a great idea, great idea. If you could support us, we need teachers in so they can be here with us. Because it's very difficult for us as parents to, many parents, they have to leave their kids by themselves because they don't have anyone to take them. And they just have to be there. And first, transportation, they go chat, they're by themselves. And we have a lot of challenges, very obvious. And we have a lot of challenges, very ugly challenges inside of our, thank you.
Gracias, Yadi Gojiz. Thank you, Ms. Gojiz, for your comments. Uh, next speaker is Erin Washmore. Erin, you're prepared to grab your mic anywhere you like. You can pull it out of the socket wherever you like to. Thank you. You have three minutes. Thank you.
All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Erin Washmore. I'm the president of the Redwood City Teachers Association. You asked a question earlier, do teachers really want this? Is this something that teachers really want? I can't speak for all teachers yet. We have a survey on this matter, but I can speak for a few teachers. Um, I know a couple of teachers who applied for low-income housing and finally got it. And I just watched their little lives turn around because they were able to finally have their own place. And they lived right next to each other and they loved it. They're loving it. Um, so yes, those teachers really wanted it. Um, I mentor, I work as a teacher, and I mentor a teacher who works in Hayward or who lives here but has to drive. It's her first year. She just lived here from Virginia. And she drives across the bridge every day to go to Hayward to go home to live with four or five roommates because that's where she goes for her fine house. And she's a first-year teacher. Um, and I know that this kind of program would help our first-year teachers to be able to be in their communities, to be around the kids that they work with. And I, I think that would be great for the community and for our first-year teachers, um, second-year teachers, third-year teachers, new teachers, right? It could do nothing but benefit them. Me, I've, I've been a teacher for, gosh, fifteen or sixteen years now. Been in the district for, for eight of those years. And I've done a lot of, I've built up on the salary schedule. I've done a lot of extra work to get a lot of benefits, college credits. So I can do it pretty well. Um, but there's still no way I could ever afford to buy a house in Redwood City, ever. So I'll be renting for, forever. But with this kind of program, if I can pay less rent for five years and save that money, maybe I could eventually have a mountain of our house. You know, in those five years, I could actually, that could build something. So that would really help me a lot, I guess. And this teacher would, would really like to do this. I, I love this presentation that you brought today. Um, you answered a lot of the skeptical questions that I had. And, um, I, I think, you know, our, our kids in Redwood City deserve the best. And quality teachers is part of that best. And to be able to retain and recruit quality teachers is what we want to do here. So I really support this plan. This could be of interest. So thanks for, for moving forward, hopefully moving forward.
Thank you so much, Erin, for your comments. All right, with that, we're right about time. And I just want to say what a powerful day of learning we've had as a group. Um, we've all come with our own knowledge, but we gained new knowledge, I'm sure, on different perspectives, desigualmentos. Uh, the power of storytelling is the first form of education, right? And how do we know? Well, we spent the evening together getting to know each other a little more and getting to know struggle and getting to know also how we deliberate, right? And I think that's the importance of dialogue, right? And I just want to thank Kalima, Andy, your whole team, Jefferson High School District for, I, I, I'm going to quote you once, Kalima, "Not building dorms, building homes in dreams." And wow. Very powerful. And I'd like to thank Peter, Elaine Mark, the architecture team for being here, um, the Redwood City School District Board, Superintendent Baker, and most importantly, our community members who are here today learning. Thank you so much for being here. You rock. But, you know, I want to end with my note. I'd like to, then with maybe some words you'd like to tell the district to kind of dream with and to go with, and you would have wanted to hear back in the day when you were hearing a lot of differences, right?
Um, so for me, you know, I understand how you feel because Andy and I felt the same way. We were terrified moving forward with this because we knew if we messed up, you know, it would be horrible for any district coming behind us. And, you know, if I could go back in time and talk to you, I would say, stay true. Because you know what is right. And what is right is to have stacked trees of dignity. And who allows a school board member to keep demanding takes of staff and then want to turn around and watch them deliver pizzas and work second jobs and live with a bunch of people and have no type of stress or pay so much rent that they can't buy food? And then say on top of that, I need you to be their teacher. I need you to be a mental health person. I need you to check on this. I need you to do that. We need you to be here. We need you to teach during COVID. We need you to teach during shootings. We need you to teach during all kinds of other things. But we're not going to do anything that we can possibly do to ensure that you are safe at that. I know what is right. And this was the right thing.
Let me share just a quick one yet. You know, Marie, you mentioned you have a lot of, a lot of international teachers here or another staff in the district. We do too. Uh, we have a lot of Filipino national staff and teachers as well who specifically are teaching special ed and some single subject matter. Um, and they came over the past few years and moved together because they couldn't find a place to live. Well, last year I was actually helping one of our staff move from one apartment into seven five Sarahani. And I was just talking with one of the staff members who was helping her and asked them, so, you know, so what's your story? And they said, well, you know, I just wanted to meet up with this woman last week. And my family just moved from the Philippines yesterday. We reunited families in our building. They left their families behind to come teach our kids? And they left their families behind? I mean, it was all I could do not to cry, helping to win a bunch of options. So you're doing the right thing. What, what's heartening here tonight is to hear we've got union, staff, board, administration are all on the same page. And right there, that's the powerful combination you need to make this happen. So I'm really heartened by, by what I'm hearing tonight and I'm really excited for the path forward. You've got, you've got a lot of good going, you've got a lot of good ahead of you. And I can't wait to see what you do in a few years and when. Hey, we want to be there when you break ground. And we definitely want to be there with open doors to welcome home your staff.
Well, I want to end with the words, uh, I'm going to pass it on to you to wrap this up today. Thank you so much, everyone.
Again, thank you so very much to everyone that came. We really appreciate it. And with that, we do want to be conscientious of every one's time. And again, we appreciate you for being here. So with that said, would somebody mind reaching to you for a minute? All is in favor. All right. Thank you very much. Good evening.